Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the City of Independence, I welcome each of you in attendance to the February twenty-fifth meeting of the Independence Planning Commission. Before we begin our meeting, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the name of our liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it is the responsibility of this commission to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the Independence City Council on matters relating to zoning and land use changes within our city. We also consider and make decisions on plaits, special use permits, and other issues, as well as changes in codes and policies that relate to city planning. Our procedure for each case tonight will be as follows. First, as the case is called, the city will read their report to us. Then, the applicant will be recognized to speak on behalf of their case, followed by anyone else in attendance that wishes to speak in favor of that case. Secondly, those who are in opposition or who have questions regarding the case will then be recognized to speak. If there was opposition or questions from the public, the applicant will then be allowed a rebuttal period to address those concerns or questions. Once the applicant is finished with that rebuttal period, the Chair will declare the public hearing portion of the case closed, and further comment from the public will not be recognized. The commissioners will then have the opportunity to discuss the merits of the case with one another, and during that discussion, the commission reserves the right to ask questions of any and all parties concerned. And then finally, the commission will render a decision on the case. Because this is the only public hearing of the cases on the agenda tonight, all those who wish to speak will be heard. All comments and questions should be addressed to me, the Chair, and not directly to either an applicant or directly to the staff. The Chair also requests that statements be kept brief and on point. Please do not ramble. So, to expedite tonight's meeting, the Chair asks that everyone who wishes to testify, or talk, or ask questions tonight, or who thinks they may do that, please stand now and be sworn in. All those standing, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly tear the whole, do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please answer, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our first case tonight is case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero two, special use permit at one two one zero one East US forty Highway. The staff, city staff, please give us the report.
Louis McDaniel seeks to operate a used car dealership at one two one oh one East Forty Highway in southwest Independence. The oval shows the location site at the intersection of East Forty-third Street and Forty Highway. This is the zoning for the area, again with the property in the oval. Commercial properties are on along both sides of this segment of Forty Highway, north of this commercial corridor or property zoned residential. The city of Kansas City, Missouri is to the southwest and is shown in white on this slide. The comprehensive plan shows commercial uses proposed for the site. Again, all the red is a commercial use, and then the yellow is a residential use on this comprehensive plan. The aerial photo shows the site again in the oval. The lot contains two buildings. The applicant will operate primarily out of the rear building. The southwest corner of the rear building is in Kansas City, Missouri. East Forty-third Street goes east-west across this slide, and Forty Highway runs northwest-southeast directions. This is the front building on the lot. It's been vacant since the tire store closed here a couple years ago. This is the rear building where the applicant will use for his operations with the parking area between the two buildings. Here, we're in the church parking lot behind the rear building, looking north at the back of the rear building. That is the corner that you see there. It's closest to our view is the part that's in Kansas City, Missouri. Here, we're looking south at the commercial building on the west side of the site. That's the applicant's barber shop, the Solution, on the left. Looking northwest, this is part of the cable dollar car dealership that fronts on the Forty Highway. Most of the dealership is actually west of this location. This is on the eastern end of it. These next two slides are businesses that are on the north side of Forty Highway here. And then this is the restaurant that abuts the subject property on its eastern side. The applicant property, applicant's property is just to the right, just slightly off the slide. Actually, you might see the applicant's building there, just right there by the canopy for the drive-through. Staff recommends approval of this, this special use permit application subject to the following conditions. At least five parking spaces shall be designated for customer parking with the spaces kept free of sale vehicles at all times. One of the spaces must be designated as an ADA space with the proper markings and signage. All site improvements shall be completed prior to the city license being approved for the business. And then the use of the front building for any business other than the applicant's sales lot will require provision of, will require the provision of parking spaces required to serve that use. No business license will be approved for this property other than the applicant's sales lot until parking and any other issues are resolved by city staff and the applicant. And the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Stuart, just before we bring the applicant forward, could you go to the slide that shows the front of the building and question?
Well, this is the building where he will operate out of.
Okay.
Now, the front building is that one.
Okay, so it's the back, it's back.
Yeah. Now, he has indicated that this building is not in particularly good shape right now. And he has no plans to use this building, but in the future, he may use it for an office. But he can elaborate on that when he's up here. But this is, oops, this is the building, the, the front building is right here on your right. You can see just the back portion of it. And then this is the drive area that goes back to the rear building, and that's all the parking area in the rear building. This slide shows actually the building is bigger than it appears on the other, other slides, from this gives you a better idea. The way that Forty Highway and Forty-third Street are situated there, it's kind of confusing whether things are on the north and south, and you don't get good angles on some things.
Sure. So, is the, is the building in the front, are they all parked on the same lot?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, when you're talking about adding five spots, are you talking about adding them?
He could add them here or add them somewhere else. Now, this is where the parking was for the store when it was the tire store.
Okay.
I don't know how it operated other than that. There is some semblance of an ADA space there on the left side of the screen, right there by the little city car.
Okay.
And this building will be used in support of auto sales?
That's my understanding. He said, indicates that he will, the idea is he may use it, bring his office up to this building in the future. But what I understand, it's, for whatever reason, it's not in particularly good shape right now. You have to do some work to make it worthwhile, to make it useful. I think he can elaborate on that better than I can.
Okay. Would the applicant please come forward? And just make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Louis McDaniel. As stated, I would like to open a small used car dealership.
Make sure, make sure you state your address as well.
Okay.
Your residence.
My residential address?
Yes, sir.
Okay. To begin with, or can I do?
Yeah, to begin with.
My name's Louis McDaniel. I live at thirty-seven sixteen Southwest Evergreen Lane, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you, sir. Okay, go ahead.
As stated, I'd like to open a small used car dealership at one two one zero one East Forty-third Street, Independence, six four zero five five. It will be a dealership that operates with high standards and moral values, and will aim to be an asset as well as a service to the Independence and surrounding communities. I'm a forty-three-year-old, father of three. All boys ages twenty-two, seventeen, and sixteen. We've lived in Lee Summit for, excuse me, since two thousand nine. Again, as stated, I've owned and worked at the Solution Barber Shop, which is next door to the property. I have a high level of automotive understanding. I've worked on my own cars for as long as I can remember. I attended, or was a part of the Automotive Technology Program at MCC Longview. I didn't complete it, but I got close. But I did gain a thorough understanding of the mechanical side of the automotive industry. I've worked for four different dealerships over the last ten years, and have gained some insight on, you know, how the auctions work and how the dealerships are ran, so. My plan is to further my education in the industry to become as proficient and as efficient as possible. Should I speak about the property itself, or?
Yeah, you're, I saw your letter, but you're welcome to, to tell us anything you want about the property, sure.
Okay.
Try to sell us on it.
Okay. The property is, in my opinion, suited for a car dealership. It has pretty nice sized office inside of the building that's located in the rear, and I've already began to remodel it, you know, as such. It has plenty of space on the inside of it for small repairs to my inventory only. And that's what I would plan to do. The higher-end inventory that I may have, I'll use it to store, I'll use that building to store that inventory like overnight and things of that nature. And then any other, any other inventory will be parked in front of that building between the rear building and the front building that was shown there. And, um, let's see. I mean, lastly, I'd like to thank you for even reviewing the request, and I assure you that if given the opportunity, I will, you know, give it my all and reach the goals that I stated in the proposal.
Okay. Just one question I have. Do you plan on, like, offering, like, financing out of, from your building, or are you gonna have them go somewhere else?
Eventually, not to begin with. Like I said, I, I, I've figured out a way to earn a decent living and offer very, very affordable rates. So, financing generally is not needed, you know, when it comes to me. But, you know, depending on where the business goes and what's afforded to me along the way, financing might be a necessity. And I plan to, you know, move forward with that at that point, but not to begin with, no.
I see. And the recommendations about the parking lot that the city wants you to do, you're, you're okay with doing all those?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And just to elaborate a little bit, I do plan to use the front of the first building for parking. It just makes sense to me. It completely separates the inventory from the customer parking, and it's a lot easier for the customer to park there and walk around than it would be to drive back and put the five spots in the back and have to maneuver out, so. I think that makes a little more sense, so.
And I've driven by there, and I, but I don't exactly remember. Is there visibility back from the street to see that there's a used car?
A small portion. It's not totally visible. Obviously, the front building kind of blocks it from Forty Highway, but between Churches Chicken and the front building, there is a decent amount of viewing area there. And I plan to make it attractive, you know, some sort of flags or lighting that will allow, you know, people to drive by and see it.
Sure.
And there's quite a bit of traffic that, I mean, comes through churches alone that will be right up on, able to see the inventory that I have back there, so.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions?
I do. How many cars do you think you can get on your lot?
Well, the front, let, let, I'll break it down. Like, the front building can hold maybe fifteen cars total. The space between the two buildings, anywhere from forty to fifty cars, and I don't plan to put that many cars there. It'll allow it to have an open look, and, you know. I don't want to run it like cars on top of cars and just, I mean, I would like for it to be presentable, so. I don't plan to fill the two capacity, but it can hold forty to fifty cars if I line each one of them up and just put them in there. The building in the rear, it's capable of holding, I'd say, twenty cars or so. So, I mean, quite a bit of space to park cars, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. No problem.
Previously, this parcel was used by a tire vendor. Do you know what it was used for prior to that?
Prior to that, there was a sports retail shop. They sold things like high school equipment and jerseys and things of that nature.
Well, it was a swimming pool supply.
And that was prior to the sports store. It was a swimming pool supply place for a long time.
And a tire.
Yes.
Thank you. What kind of signage do you plan on using?
The rear of the building has a, a slope on it. If possible, I'd like to put a full-size image of a car up there with some type of lighting that would draw attention. Basic signs on the building itself, and then along the fencing.
I see in, in the front there, there's a standalone sign. Does that go with this property?
Uh, no, sir, that's actually to the barber shop.
I see. So, you could put it on the wall right there, or on the seat, on the roof?
Yes, I can, absolutely. And then there's some space in the yard that actually belongs to that property as well, and I can put things so that when people turn the corner or, or coming westbound on Forty Highway, they'd be able to see the sign there as well.
Just to note that this area is an area that you're allowed only monument signs, not pole signs. Something to take into consideration.
Question. There are some X number, perhaps I might even say excessive number of used car lots in Independence.
Yes, sir.
Why do you want to add one more? And what, what value do you bring that is not already in the marketplace in excess already? So, why should we approve one more used car lot in Independence?
First off, pricing, which may not, you know, sit well with the other dealerships, but in my opinion, the surrounding, or the dealerships that are closer are a bit overpriced. So, I mean, I would have, I would offer a fair option to the people in the Independence and the surrounding communities. Secondly, eventually, I would like to turn it into something more high-end. There's no, I mean, right now, you get, you got cash cars at the lots that are close, and I would like to offer maybe some type of, you know, a higher-end option to those car lots. There's nothing over there that, you know, that offers imports or, you know, the higher-end American cars or anything like that. So, eventually, that's the goal, you know. You have to have money to do that, so. I have to start somewhere, but that will be the goal.
So, you think your one more car lot would be a real asset to Independence?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one for you, Chair.
Sure, oh.
The question you asked him was, and I, I misunderstood. Were you financing the cars, or when you asked that? I didn't, I didn't understand if he, he heard it right or not.
He was asking if I was going to offer financing to the, to the public.
Yes.
And not to begin with, that's not my plan. Maybe eventually, but I plan to offer cash prices. So, I mean, I would influence the customer to go get financing first, if that's a necessity, but.
Are you buying this property, or are you leasing this?
Leasing at the moment. I have spoke with the owner. He's willing to sell me the property and carry the note. I don't know, I mean, this is the first step, you know, to get this approved first before I consider that. But at the moment, I'm leasing.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I got one for the staff.
Go ahead.
I know that we're doing a, I got, excuse me, a special use permit. So, normally, we have to have an acre and a half for a used car lot? And we're at a half an acre?
That's why we're doing the special use permit.
Right. So, how many special use permits are we gonna allow for car lots? Or is there gonna be one?
Uh, that's, the council makes the final decision on the number of car lots and where they're located in the city.
Okay.
Okay. My, I had a question, and you mentioned about the sign. Right? So, he could replace the sign on the building later if he so wants to, or not?
Sure, sure, the, the building sign is fine. I mean, you're still ten percent of the wall area, and the sign that's up there now is probably not ten percent. It's probably less than that.
Sure.
But as far as any ground signs, any street signs, road signs, he's limited to monuments only.
And you, you know the difference between monument and pole and sign?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Well, I don't know that there's any other questions, but.
Staff, what is the size of this lot? Square footage?
Uh, well, let me see.
It's on their point.
Hang on just a second here. Let me get my staff report.
Half an acre.
It says point five-two acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, what he said?
Point five-two.
Point five-two, half, yeah.
Little over half.
Yeah, a touch over half of an acre.
Okay.
Okay, is that it for now? All right. Thank you. You may sit down. All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone here who is opposed to this case or has questions? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of this case and ask the commissioners if they want to have a discussion about it, or motions, or?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
For some time now, we have wrestled with the number of used car lots in the City of Independence. On some occasions, we have approved special use permits. When do you think it will be forthcoming from the council or staff? Some guidance about what is an appropriate number of used car lots?
Well, I wouldn't hold my breath, but I would hope they would give us something. Otherwise, we just have to take it on case by case for now. I understand what you're saying. Just, in my opinion.
Your humble but accurate opinion?
Well, you got that right. That opinion, because of where it's at on Forty, and because there's other, you know, car places there, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. And he seems like a stand-up guy, so I think he.
Is that because he's some six feet?
Well, he definitely doesn't have the attitude of a used car salesman. I'll put, I'll put it that way. It seems like he's more out for his fellow man than he is for making a buck. But that's just my opinion.
He's, in other words, he sold you?
Yes, sir. I like to give folks the benefit of the doubt, though, so I don't, don't rely on me.
When, when these licenses are issued in special use, they're issued for one year?
No, unless there's some reason that there's a cap put on the time, generally, they're not issued for a timeframe. In fact, I can't remember the last time that it actually, one, we had one that included a ceiling or expiration.
Has this particular parcel been used as a used car lot previously?
Not to my knowledge.
No. No. It's new.
The other thing that I found encouraging was he also has a business right next door to it. So, he has an interest in making sure that that does well, I would think.
I think that's kind of what was, what sells it for me, so, yeah, he sold me probably, is that it looks good. I drive by there a lot also, and I think the encouraging thing about it, it is, it is a corner that has high visibility and high traffic.
Mm-hmm.
And the city is working diligently on kind of cleaning up Forty Highway and, and making it better. And I do feel like that corner, you know, could be a good valuable corner, and I feel like he will make it look better. It's nice, 'cause we have proof in front of us of that, which we haven't always had, right? So.
Yeah, and I, I don't think there's a big leap from what he's wanting to do to what it was used for, for a tire store. I don't think there's a big.
No.
Leap for that, so.
Does the special use permit stay with the property or with the document?
Well, it could be, if he decided to sell it to his brother, let's say, it could be sold to another party as long as they follow through on the same requirements and standards that was how the special use permit was established.
Okay, so, so once, once that, that you, that special use is there, then it can pass right along to?
We, we had one on Truman Road, right at Truman and Hardy, I believe, that's on the, a little dealership there on the nor, on the northwest corner. It was sold from the original special use permit applicant to another party, but notified him that this is the requirement that he had to follow. You also have to follow them. So, they're not issued to a person, it's more or less a business.
That's what I would like to see the council address. Is I think these special use permits ought to go with the owner of the property. If he sells it, it ought to come back up for review again. 'Cause it's always, that's one thing that's always bothered me about this special use. It's like we treat it like a special case, and then once it's in there, it's in there for perpetuity. So.
Can we put that in as a?
Highly doubtful. Give them the bad news, Stuart.
Well, I think I'll let the city council answer that one. He says that no, you cannot put a limit on the, or a ceiling on the time, or a.
Is that for just our city or is that state?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, we could put it on there, and then they could take it off.
Well.
Is it something we can request, or just kind of make a? Could you explore, for the council to explore that, or?
I could, when I do the cover sheet that goes forth to the council for review, I could mention that, if you like. As far as the state of Missouri goes, the state doesn't even mention special use permits in this state statute, so. You know, we're on our own here.
Well, I know one, I'm almost positive that once you do this, it, it makes the property worth more money. I've seen it on the, on various other ones. It, it, it makes the property worth more.
Well, you're only adding one use to the, the, the uses that are already permitted in C two. It doesn't open it up to payday loans or anything like that. It just allows the used car lot in addition to all the other permitted uses in the district. So, it could be true. I don't know if that's the case or not.
So, if you're gonna mention it, how are you gonna do that?
Well, I'd just say the planning commission mentioned concerns about possibly eliminating the, you know, putting a, a cap on the years or restricting the time. putting a, a cap on the years or restricting the timeframe available. Um, we haven't done that for years, uh, we actually, when I first started here, we, uh, actually had ceilings or, uh, expiration dates on cell towers. Uh, and that, uh, we went through redoing some of them for the first couple of years and then we just stopped putting timeframes on them. And that's pretty much done away, we've done away with all that on all the special use permits.
Not that, so if a person opens a used car lot and they, you know, get the special use permit, fine, the city council says yes. Let's say they have a used car lot there for two years and then all of a sudden they say, you know, I'm going to do something different. As long as it's in the C two, they're okay?
Well, they can still do everything that's allowed in a C two district by right. But after the car lot closes for a certain time period, I think they lose the special use permit provision and then the next person would have to apply. It doesn't necessarily run with the property in perpetuity. I mean, I don't think we've ever interpreted that, that to be the case. Of course, I can't say we've had a lot of those, but.
I, I understand, but you, you just seem to indicate that like if his, his brother bought it from him and wanted to use it as a used car lot, he could.
Well, that's, that's true.
And then he could just keep it in the family and it could be one.
It, it, it could be.
Even though, you know, time goes on and things around change and things happen.
Well, it's, we're regulating the use, not the ownership. It'd be just like a non-conforming, be like a non-conforming grocery store on the corner that's been there for sixty years. I mean, the, the original owner is probably not alive now, but as long as the grocery continues to be active and doesn't violate any of the non-conforming standards, it can stay there forever. It would be the same as this, as long as the dealership followed the requirements of the special use permit and any other city codes, what does it really make a difference who owns it? Because we're regulating the use, not the ownership.
Yeah, I'm not concerned so much about the ownership, but about the use.
Well, that's what the special use permit and all the city code standards are for.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To end the discussion, I'm going to move for approval of this case number two zero dash two zero zero dash zero two special use at one two one zero one east US Highway in the hands of Louis McDaniel. Considering the staff's recommendation to be included and no deviation from the standard special use permit.
Before I ask for a second, I would like you to ask the city council to consider and give us an answer back about if they are okay with the way the special use permit is. So we can know next meeting or.
You mean if they can be, uh, passed on or sold the business or about the number of special use permits?
Let's start with the number of special use permits for used car lots, let's start there.
I, I can tell you that in, a lot of times in the special use permits, if they invest a lot of capital in the, uh, operations, like a cell tower, a lot of money involved or or landfill or something like this, the special use permits are generally very long, twenty years. Because you've got a lot of money in that property. But when they're not so much, at least this is what I've seen. But when there's not a lot of capital invested, they're just like a, a open lot, they're doing something there, they tend to be shorter. So they're kept on a shorter leash, so to speak. So that's something to think about also.
Well, that's fine, I just want to know what they're thinking. Or, you going to say something to us? All right, well, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, we definitely can pass that on to council. I would say, in the absence of any direction from them though, you should probably continue to, you know, review these in the normal manner and leave that up to city council to decide what the number is. So I will pass your question along to them, but I would just say with, out of an affirmative answer one way or the other, we should, should continue to consider these as they come forward and let them make the final decision on what's too many and where they should be, is kind of my recommendation to you.
And that's fine, I, I, I myself am okay with that, it's just that, what's it been, about a year? That we heard that, uh, there was some concern about how many there were.
And, yeah, as I said, I will definitely run it up the flagpole and see if there is a desire to put a cap and communicate with, that with you guys, but in the absensivity of that, I would just say.
I mean, we're going to keep on doing what we're doing.
Okay.
All right. You worry too much about us.
Second.
Okay, have a second. So unless there's any further discussion or motions, we will take the vote. Commissioner Drier?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero two special use permit for one two one zero one east US forty highway has been approved. Good luck to you. Next case is case two zero dash two hundred dash zero three special use permit for, at one oh one east US twenty four highway. The city staff, please give us their report.
Tom Gorance, uh, requests a special use permit to operate a used car vehicle sales lot at one oh one east US twenty four highway. And if you look at the, uh, vicinity map here, it's on the southwest corner of, or southwest corner. Uh, the proposed lot would be on the southeast corner of North Main and twenty four highway. The area zoned uh, C two, um, surrounds this property, um, along that corridor. All up and down, uh, twenty four highway here. Although the comprehensive plan actually envisions this area as being residential, the established pattern along here is a, a strip commercial corridor. So surrounding uses, there's a, what was a motorcycle shop basically, um, vacant motorcycle shop to the north. Uh, to the south is a residence, although on the lot zoned, uh, commercial. Property to the east is the location of a payday loan. And to the west is, um, the existing developed, um, two lots of, uh, the applicant's, uh, car lot operation. So, um, the applicant operates a used car dealership at the northwest and southwest corners. A main street and US twenty four highway, across the street and catty-cornered to the northwest from this expansion site. Uh, the new site wouldn't contain any buildings and none is proposed. The lot would simply just serve as a display area for about thirty additional vehicles. Let me go back here at the site plan again. The site plan indicates a lot that will remain mostly paved as it is right now. Uh, the twenty four highway entrances would be eliminated and green spaces would be added near that northern property line. A decorative wrought iron fencing would be installed on the east, the west and the north sides of the property. Uh, ballards would be located inside the fence on the property to prevent vehicles from, from hitting those cars. Uh, the back, um, edge of the property is bordered by a masonry wall, um, existing masonry wall, uh, where a, uh, black vinyl chain link fence would be built upon, upon it. There's a green space in front, landscaping will need to be planted, um, along that, um, green strip. Administrative adjustment, um, will probably be required, um, therefore to meet the landscaping requirements of the code, given the pre-existing uh, coverage of payment o- over most of the property, restraining the ability to do much plantings. And lastly, a sidewalk and, and curb improvements will be needed along, um, North Main Street. Actually, there's a sidewalk there, but it will need to be reconstructed. So real quickly, I'll go through some of the pictures. So this is looking south from twenty four highway right away, looking into the property. Um, as you can see, it's mostly a large existing paved surface. Um, this is the southeast corner of the property, you can see the masonry wall, um, making the corner there with, uh, the green building, the payday loan there to the west or to the east. This is looking southwest across the property, looking at the house to the south and, and neighbor, neighbors across, um, Main Street there. And this is looking back north toward the intersection, so you can see it's paved all right up to the stop sign, up to the intersection. Very little green area. Uh, this is the south boundary of the property, uh, that home is right up near the property line. There's an exist, there, you can see the existing masonry wall there. And that's where a, a, uh, vinyl covered fence could be placed upon the top of that. This is looking south down Main Street. And this is looking west, um, down twenty four at the applicant's, uh, business there on the south there and the north as well. And then this is the cycle place directly to the north of the property and looking back toward the pawn shop and back toward the Nolan Road intersection off to the east. Uh, staff recommends approval of the case, uh, with the following conditions. Include, um, landscaping, uh, strip and a, uh, black vinyl chain link fence on the retaining wall at the southern edge of the lot. Uh, provide wrought iron fencing and landscaping as indicated by the site plan. And submit an administrative adjustment for the remainder of the required landscaping, uh, not provided. And they would do that at, at the time of the site plan. So, um, that completes the report and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
I have one request, I guess. Um, could you walk, this, well, answer this question first, that you said this was mostly for storage of cars? Or is he going to actually sell cars from this lot?
Well, it, it's a display area. Um, as you can see there, it's, it's visible, highly visible from the intersection.
Sure.
But as you, as you can see, it's, it's just a lot.
Okay, so I'm not trying to be difficult, put it that way. Why wasn't this, why can't this be just a storage lot? I mean, walk me through the decision, why it's special use permit instead of just for storage?
Well, I mean, it's, it's merchandise, so it's not vehicle storage and that's, I mean, if, if you wanted to classify it as vehicle storage, that's, that's another, that's, that's industrial use actually. Um, we're talking inventory and that's your, that's a display lot, that's a car lot.
So that's why I'm asking, so it's considered special use because it's, even though it's just for display and not for sale?
Well, no, it's for sale, it's displayed for sale.
Okay, all right. All right, any questions of staff?
What is the lighting that's going to, is or going to be? Is it a standard like pole pool that we see or is it standard or is it like car lot lighting?
I think, uh, we'll, we'll have the applicant come up momentarily, um, we probably should have, um, been a little bit more explicit about the lighting situation. Whatever they propose in the site plan, um, will have to meet code, which, you know, you can't uh, have light that bleeds into the residential to the south as, off the property basically or, or, um, um, into the traffic, travel lanes of, of, of the roadways. I mean, you, you, uh, photometric plan is a standard part of our site plan review process.
Okay.
Okay, but there's no existing lighting standards or anything there now, I mean, there are no existing lights there now? Light poles, light fixtures?
Yeah, that's.
There doesn't appear to be from looking at these pictures, I don't see, I don't see any.
And, and if it comes up, what's the, what's the sign requirements for this, if a sign goes up on it? No poles?
We do allow pole signs in this court. Yeah, because we're, wait a minute, yes, 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 yeah, yes, that's correct. In fact, theoretically, they could have two signs because they have two right of ways.
Okay. Any other questions before we bring the applicant up? Okay, would the applicant please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, my name is Tom Gorance, not an O on, on a C on the end of it. I live at sixty seven oh one North Elmwood Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri.
Okay.
And I've been involved, uh, with our city since the seventies, matter of fact, the, the lot next door I purchased in seventy nine and the one across the street on, I purchased in eighty two. Um, I was involved until last fall and I'm semi-retired. I've got to tell you, in forty-four years, I've never had a complaint, if you look me up, I got people calling me home, stealing cars. So, um, I try real hard to, to please, even if it's giving more after a fact. Um, but the, the two tenants I have are the best I've, I've ever met in the business, I don't hang around car people, so you know that. But, um, they're both families, supporting their families, uh, both sides. And, um, they have my beliefs, I told them about how my success was there. And, um, the one that's going to be in, in charge of this lot is Zip Auto. And it's a husband and wife, same as the other side. And they're going to take cars to storm, they're for sale, but they'll do the contracts, paperwork all at nine twenty eight North Main, the other building. They want to carry more inventory and we were hoping to be already having this done, um, like tax time, you know, so they can, uh, take advantage of the, the extra money also. Uh, we're putting three inches of asphalt down, which is over twenty thousand dollars and the fence is over twenty. Uh, the lights you talked about, if we could go back to the, the front showing the back of the lot, uh, that would be, see where the kind of white area in the back wall?
Yes.
I, I have talked, I, we already have lights up there now, we put up, but we're talking about putting a pole up there and I've already dealt with the, um, oh, the rental, rental lights of Independence and putting a pole there and then putting two LED lights that go out and down. I don't want to light up twenty four highway, I just want to light, light the car lot. Now again, I won't be operating this lot, it's, it's leased out. We already have, if you could see up in the corner, up there by the house and across the street, you see the, the rental lights? We already have three five hundred watt LED lights on this lot just because it keeps truckers and we've caught drugs and needles and.
Yeah.
So this, this has changed over my years there, it's changed. Used to be the Saint Mary's High School kids come by and Crispin High School jog by and we used to have apples we'd give away and water, popcorn machine and, you know, all the things you do, but it's not the same now, now. You, you got a lot of transit homeless and we have to really keep it lit. The reason why we're putting the post up is not necessarily to keep from going in, I've had that happen before where cars have lost control and went in the car lot, but it's also to keep them from stealing the cars, which we're having more of, of a problem, so. So, the lighting will be as of right now, rental through the City of Independence. We keep the property clean, if you look at one of the lots. I'm very, I have a fourteen-page lease. And I watch it very carefully, and this gentleman just wants... It's not the first time I've had somebody ask me, but wanted a larger lot, because it only holds so many cars, and this guy likes pickup trucks.
I see.
And it's a good business. Nobody can afford an eighty thousand dollar truck, so a used one is, is where it's, the business is.
So, then at night, after, I don't know, I don't know when these business hours are, but you're gonna be able to, you're gonna close it up, or just leave it open?
No, the gate, there'll be gates on the Main Street side, and they will close and lock with a padlock.
Okay, and the staff was saying there's some, you know, landscaping and other things that they're gonna require. You're aware of that, and you're okay?
Very much aware, we already have it planned and ready to go.
Okay.
Just need the, okay, now this is, giving an example of this lot. If you drive on Nolan Road, some of the new car dealers have their cars stored.
Yes.
And they'll go grab the car and take it back down to the location. I sold a building in Fairmount to Auto Now years ago, and they had the Dahmer Chevrolet property, and they have a storage lot down there the same. They just put cars, and then they bring them over and do the paperwork, go on a test drive. This lot, I believe, is really close to an acre. I don't know the measurements, but I was told it was pretty close.
Yeah, I don't like that.
How much? And I've been around long enough to know when the moratorium went on car lots years ago.
It's a third of an acre.
Is it a third of an acre?
Yeah.
Okay. I never lived on a farm, so I didn't know what an acre, I was just told that, so...
Yeah, okay. Any questions of...
Yeah, Tom, what used to be here?
Car wash, and they tore it down in nineteen seventy-nine, and it's been vacant since.
I don't remember.
And semi-trucks do park there, and I let them do it for a long time, just because at least some activity.
It looks like you're gonna do a good job there.
Yeah, it's gonna look nice. I, I've, I'm the original Tommy of Tommy's Bar, Tommy's Ice Cream and Deli, and some other businesses, and I've always done things like I want to be treated, or like I would want to go into, you know, very clean, very, so... We try real hard to do that. And if you go in these offices, they're kept up, or they get notified by me.
Any other questions of Tom? Alright, well, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much.
Yep. Okay, public portion is open, so is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this case? Duly noted. Okay, is there anyone here who is opposed, or who has questions? Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the case and ask the commissioners if they have further discussion or motions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
As reluctant as I am about car lots, and I make no apologies for it, I think this is a matter of common sense. This is not adding a parking car lot. This is merely growing an existing lot. And if I understand correctly, this plot of land has been vacant now for, since nineteen seventy-nine. Somehow, in spite of myself, I find myself inclined to act favorably toward this, because I think it does improve.
Yeah, it's quality.
It's clear that this applicant has been an asset in his presentation of inventory. And this expanded inventory will probably reflect what he's done over the years. Therefore, really without reservations and without any reluctance, Madam Vice Chair, and I lean, I lean in support of this one. I know that's difficult for you to believe, but I actually, this one I feel good about.
Well, Billy, I've always come to expect the unexpected from you. So, appreciate that. And I, actually, I feel the same way, so... Is there any other comments anybody wishes to make?
I just got a question.
Yeah.
Again. I'm just wondering about this, when they're walking from one lot to the other, across the street? Because it's, are you guys worried about safety? That's all I was thinking about. And I was talking, that's a good point.
Yeah, but actually asked the city if they'd put a walk, a crosswalk. And they actually said, we probably will. So, you know...
I'm just worried about the safety of, you know, you guys showing cars back and forth.
Correct. Yeah, and that's why I don't allow, there's an opening back years ago when I bought this lot, there was an opening for the front. Jerry Dahmer owned this property originally, when I bought it in seventy-nine. And people could come in the front and go out the front. I closed it because I didn't want any wrecks there. If you go out and get out too far, and here comes a car up 24 Highway, and boom. So I didn't want to be accused or get sued for that deal, so... You can only get in one direction on all these lots I own.
But they won't be going in there anyway? Driving into it, right?
No, they...
That's just a show walk?
Just show, now, it's gonna be open.
But there's no parking for customers?
Yeah, they might be. I'm sorry, talking my hands. I, there could be, and if there is, we're gonna, we'll do the handicap parking. I'm aware of that.
Okay. That's all, I'm just worried about the safety.
We'll do the ADA, we'll do it. And ten years from now, I might want to put a building there. Maybe a smoothie shop.
How about, if this was approved by the commission, with the recommendation that a crosswalk be installed, of course, at the expense of the applicant? But would that, are we, is that...
Well, I think that would be up to the City Public Works Department to decide on that.
Yeah, I think we're gonna get a response.
Generally, the applicant are not required to pay for those.
This is actually a happy and good response. The Public Works Department is actually working on a 24 Highway beautification project that will expand some of the sidewalks, and there will absolutely be crosswalks on all of these intersections.
It's a safety concern.
So, yeah, it is, it is something that will happen down the road, probably within the next year or so. So, just kind of wanted to let you all know that.
So, in that landscaping that this planning dude has been coordinated with?
We, yes, in fact, we've already done that. We have met with the applicant and talked about this project, and he is aware to keep any of his work kind of on his side of the power lines that are there, and we shouldn't interfere with any of his work, and he shouldn't interfere with any of ours, so... We have already coordinated all that.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of case twenty dash two hundred dash oh three, special use permit.
With?
Second.
With? Joe, you have to, Stewart will say something if you don't. You gotta say with the recommendations, with the city recommend, you gotta say that, with the city recommendations.
City recommendation. With a foundation.
Boy, you are difficult sometimes. Okay. You, Billy seconded, Joe passed, made the motion. Alright, if there's no other discussion or additional amendments, then we are ready for the vote.
Mr. Chair, before the vote, who is this couple sitting out here beside the applicant?
Well, we're glad you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Alright. We are ready. At least I am.
Commissioner Drer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson? Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
And Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes, case number two zero dash two hundred dash zero three, special use permit for 101 East US 24 Highway has been approved. Thank you, sir, and good luck to you. You're welcome.
And it's an honor to have the Franklins in the house.
Amen.
On the way, that grocery store, if they owned that sixty years, they, they're still here, if they would've.
Okay, our next case is case number one nine dash four hundred dash zero seven, short-term rental for five one four South Liberty Street. Can we have the report, please?
Jay and Elsa Steeple intend to operate a short-term rental from a small cottage at four fourteen South Liberty Street, adjacent to their home at five sixteen South Liberty. So, looking at the vicinity map, this is right north of Pacific Avenue, just south of the square, about four blocks on South Liberty. This is an area zoned R thirty PUD all throughout the neighborhood, even though the uses are generally single-family, although there is some multifamily uses as well. It's a mixture of uses. As you can see, this, it's a narrow lot, and the cottage, the small house, is toward the rear of the lot there. And then you can see the other single-family homes there to the, to the south, as well as apartment complex immediately to the north. And the old elementary school that was, until recently, was our health department here at the city across the street. Well, the three hundred and fifty square foot cottage has one king-size bed and a studio-type dwelling. Thus, it sleeps two guests. It will have a bathroom with a shower and a toilet, as well as a kitchen with a refrigerator and small appliances, but no stove or oven. Guests will be, will have to provide their names of all those who are staying in the home, and only two guests will be allowed. The Airbnb application permits are actually for only two weeks. The applicants will need to, will keep noise issues in check by not allowing more than two visitors, in addition to the two guests. Should this rule be broken, and lots of noise is made, the applicant requests that the guests lower the noise level. And if that continues, inform Airbnb and have Airbnb talk to those guests. And then, of course, the police is the last resort. The property can accommodate one vehicle parked by the cottage, although it's a deep driveway, you could obviously get multiple vehicles down the driveway. The site has been inspected and approved by the city's fire department and the Building Inspections Division of Community Development. So, real quickly, we'll go through the slides. But first, I will make note of the notification map here. So, the areas within the red circle were all those that received letters of notice. And here's an overview of that site plan again, and the mixture of, of different uses and different levels of residential use in the neighborhood. So, as you can see, the house is way back toward the back of the lot, very narrow, but it has this little narrow drive that goes back to it. Of course, it's multifamily uses immediately to the north. And then up to the northeast, you see some single-family and uses and other commercial uses on down the road, across the street. The old elementary school, which is the former Health Department building, currently for sale. And this is the single-family home, the applicant, that's the applicant's residence, that lies immediately to the south of the cottage. Staff recommends approval of the short-term loan, subject to the following conditions. The short-term rentals shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupation license shall be listed on all advertisements and all online platforms. Number two, the short-term rentals shall secure refuge collection from a collector who is licensed to operate in the City of Independence. And number three, the short-term rentals shall provide the safety requirements outlined in Section fourteen, four twenty.
And again, staff recommends approval, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions from Brian? Okay. Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and your address for the record, please?
Jay Steeple, five sixteen South Liberty, Independence, Missouri.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add or tell us?
We have had this house for over ten years, and we've ran an Airbnb for about five years out of it. We've never had a problem, never had anybody making noise. That right there, that's not our driveway, that's the apartment building's driveway. Our driveway is actually an alleyway that the city owns that goes around to the back of the house, where the parking is.
So there's an alley, is there an alley back?
There's an alley, yeah, we have a, the city owns, there's an alley back there to, right through, that's, that's right, just to the, my, I'm directionally challenged most of the time.
Oh, I see, yeah. It's running east-west.
Yes, yes, that's an alley right there.
Yeah, I see it, okay.
And so, and what we did was, it is ADA accessible. We had a child who passed away from cancer that was in, that, that's why we remodeled this whole cottage, it was for him. And he was paralyzed and in a wheelchair, so we had to have ADA. That's why we remodeled that and moved him out into that area. So that's what this has all, so that's, and that's one of the reasons why we don't rent it out as a, as a normal rental, because we want to pick and choose and be able to clean and keep it nice and with the memories that we have with, that go along with it.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for Jay?
I don't know.
Okay.
Clearly, you've operated this quite well, because you've done so without fanfare and undue attention. I just want to take this opportunity to applaud your efforts, respectful of your memories, and just wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you. If there's nothing else, you can go ahead and have a seat. Is there anyone else, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone here who's opposed or have questions? Okay, public hearing portion is closed. Commissioners, questions, comments, motions?
The applicant has done well.
Yes. I just probably feel the best about this one so far, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve nineteen dash four hundred dash zero seven, short-term rental for five... I move to approve nineteen dash four hundred dash zero seven, short-term rental for five fourteen South Liberty Street. Jay and Eliza Steeple, short-term with recommendations.
I second.
Okay. Thank you. I believe everyone here is ready to vote.
Commissioner Drer?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
And Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number one nine dash four hundred dash zero seven, short-term rental for five one four South Liberty Street has been approved. Thank you very much, sir, good luck to you. There are no minutes, so, I am so disappointed. Yeah, it's okay. I know you'll get them to us.
They don't have minutes?
No minutes.
Nope, nope, so is there anything that you need to tell us? Or is there anything we need to tell them? I would like to say that he did put a work order in to have the batteries changed in the clock or to have the clock replaced. He did that. Alright, man.
Is that an oxymoron? Work order.
Batteries, like, can I just, like?
They might be against the, they might be against the law.
Grab you some?
I used to work for government for a while, so I totally understand what you're going through. But I think that's great, so, what, maybe by next year, we'll have one in? Okay. Alright, anything else from anybody? Okay, we stand adjourned at seven twelve PM.